Okay, good morning, everyone. The time is nine thirty-one and I'd like to call to order the meeting for, what's today's date, May twenty-seventh. So Erica or Jamie, could you please do the roll call?
Commissioner Hemson.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio.
I'm here.
And Commissioner Baca.
Here. So if everyone can please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. And then I just need a motion to approve the agenda this morning.
So moved.
Second. The motion passes forward to zero. So next item on our agenda, so good morning, everyone. Hope you had an enjoyable, uh, three-day weekend. We're able to honor, um, our service members this past weekend. So our first proclamation of the day, we will recognize Foster Care Month, and honor the vital work happening to ensure the best outcomes possible for kids in need in our county. So I want to give a shout out to our human services team, especially the caseworkers who walk along alongside children and families, who poured their hearts into making sure kids have safe supportive homes. And to the foster parents who step up during uncertain times, we thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts. Your care truly changes lives. We know this work is hard, but it's some of the most important work we do as a community. Every child deserves a place to feel safe, seen, and loved. Thank you to everyone who's working to make that work possible. So now I'd like to, uh, have Commissioner Hem- uh, Commissioner Pinter, excuse me, read the proclamation.
Thank you Chair Baca. I have the proclamation for Foster Care Month, May twenty-twenty-five. Whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, May was nationally declared Foster Care Month to raise awareness about the importance of foster care in supporting families and encouraging community involvement as foster families and volunteers, and whereas Adams County understands that children are the key to our future success and prosperity. Every child deserves a safe and loving childhood, and foster families can provide the nurturing environments needed for healing and growth, and whereas we express gratitude to the many organizations, businesses, families, and volunteers dedicated to enhancing the well-being of children in foster care. And whereas, in an average month in twenty-twenty-four, Adams County had three hundred and eighty-five youth in foster care placement, we're experiencing a shortage of foster families, and there is no better month to begin the process of becoming a foster parent than May, National Foster Care Month. And whereas Adams County Board of County Commissioners recognizes the vital role foster parents play in the lives of children and youth in foster care, and the roles the Adams County Human Services Foster Care Team and the community play in empowering children and youth to thrive in foster care. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado, proclaims May twenty-twenty-five as Foster Care Month.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any comments from commissioners? On foster care? Yes. Okay. So now we'll recognize, uh, Older Americans Month here in Adams County, and shared responsibility to support.
Uh Chair, did we have some speakers coming up?
Oh. My apologies.
Latasha Wyatt?
So sorry, I s- I saw some squiggly marks on my remarks.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's all right.
So the Human Services Team, my apologies, um, we have Latasha Wyatt to speak on Foster Care Month. You all can come down.
So we as the foster care program at Adams County just want to take some time just to highlight some of our accomplishments and our goals. So our program is intentional in this past year and the upcoming year to understand the needs, complexities of the children in care, um, the cases of our foster children and families, and empowering our families to be successful caregivers. We are focusing this upcoming year on data to have a better understanding of specialized needs and outcomes of our program. Uh, we want to recognize our certification workers who continue to show elicitation and support to our foster families and the children in care, navigating the complexities of cases, providing emotional support and encouragement, and assisting to ensure placements are successful. Um, some highlights that we've had in this past year is that we've had our first annual recruitment day. Um, it was a division-wide participation, and we're also really excited to plan our second annual recruitment day, September of this year. We continue to have our therapeutic foster program. We have three active therapeutic foster homes and five homes that are ready to be therapeutic. We have various groups within our therapeutic foster program. We have nurture groups, book club, and we have two TBRI caregivers that are going to have our first caregiver training in June. And finally, we want to acknowledge that we are concentrating on high-acuity youth to improve collaboration specifically with Placement Desk, the therapeutic foster program, and we want to have more focus on meeting the needs of the youth and the foster homes for those high behavioral needs.
Thank you so much. I know this, I know the process and I skipped right over you, so my apologies. You know, the board has spent, um, a significant, significant amount of time just this year, um, at the HSC facility, and we appreciate what you do for our families. I've watched, um, this community of Adams County along with your, your support and also, uh, foster source, um, really advance the need for foster youth. Uh, we did, it was one of a former commissioner that, uh, really spearheaded the foster license plate, the foster kids license plate. Um, we also have housing for those children that are aging out of foster care, which is fantastic here in Adams County. So I really appreciate from the bottom of my heart, every, the work that you do every single day for our kids and our families, and finding them resources. So thank you so much. Other commissioners from the whole board?
All right. Yeah, just to echo, we're so grateful for you. I mean, to see the numbers that last year it was three hundred and eighty-five youth, and I know that some days it's a bunch of youth at once that need placements, and some days it's a slow trickle, but you guys are caring for the foster families and the youth and finding them those safe transitions, and I know how important that is. So, thank you.
So if you can please, um, just have a seat, and when we're done, we have one more proclamation, and then we'll take a picture with you right here in front of the dais, and present you with the, uh, the resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so on to our next, uh, recognition. We are recognized Older Americans Month here in Adams County, and our shared responsibility to support people of all ages in our community with dignity and care. Across our county, that commitment shows up in so many ways. From ADA accessible walking paths in our parks and code compliance that ensures safe, navigable neighborhoods, to support our veterans, to finance, to provide financially assist- financial assistance programs that help meet basic needs and so much more. And of course, we are so proud of our adult protection teams who respond to elder abuse, and our human services team that leads the way to build a responsive system for aging adults in our community. So let's take a moment today to celebrate the essential commitment we as a county are making to create a county where people age well together. So to read the proclamation this morning, Commissioner Henson.
Thank you Chair. It is my privilege to read a proclamation declaring May twenty-twenty-five Older Americans Month. Whereas the United States observes Older Americans Month to recognize the over fifty-five million older Americans contributions to our society, and whereas what began as Senior Citizens Month in the nineteen sixties, where one-third of the aging population was living in poverty with little assistance from the government, and whereas the population of individuals sixty and over is almost ninety-three thousand within Adams County, and is projected to increase, and whereas Adams County Board of County Commissioners has been innovative with investing resources to support the older Adams County residents, and whereas Adams County residents are encouraged to join together to respect, honor, and celebrate an aging person, and affirm our commitment to provide services to older adults. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado, proclaims May twenty-twenty-five as Older Americans Month, and urges all citizens to join the local, statewide, national, and world efforts to raise awareness and to help prevent elder abuse.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. So now I'd like to welcome Carol Johnson, our Aging and Adult Administrator, to speak about the efforts that we're doing in Adams County.
Good morning, commissioners. Again, my name is Carol Johnson, and I am the Aging and Adult Administrator with Human Services. I have with me Stan Stevens, one of our Adult Protective Services Supervisor, Supervisors, and I would like to thank the Board for acknowledging Older Americans Month. Each year, the month of May is time to recognize older adults' contributions to society and reaffirm our commitment to serving older adults in Adams County. The Board, both past and present, had the foresight to invest in supporting the aging community with additional resources not always accessible through our local area agency on aging, Dr. Cog. With your support, we've been able to establish contracts for Adams County residents in need, sixty years and older, to support them with aging in place where they can remain in their residences and maintain their independence. Each year, the Administration for Community Living chooses a theme for Older Americans Month, which is Flip the Script on Aging. Not only is the month established to recognize older adults, the theme highlights the importance of combating ageism to transform how society perceives, talks about, and approaches aging by challenging stereotypes and highlighting the benefits of healthy aging. By promoting and celebrating the contributions, knowledge, expertise, and experiences of older adults, we have the opportunity to positively impact the myths that society has placed upon them. Our community continues to age. The sixty-plus population within Adams County is projected to be approximately twenty percent by twenty-thirty, and expected to increase over the next twenty years, while other age groups such as children will remain relatively the same. Not only can this population be an asset to the community, but additionally, we want to ensure that we can provide support for those who are in need, whether that need is a supportive service such as Meals on Wheels, or Grab Bar in the shower, or in some situations to ensure protective services for those at risk. We know that the demand will continue to increase. As we close out May, this is an opportunity to consider those that are often forgotten. If our community can take some time and engage with our older adults, our lives will only be richer from the experience. Thank you again.
Thank you so much for being here. Uh, comments from the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Henson.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your comments, and thank you all for being here and the work that you do. Uh, your statistics are, I, I don't need to repeat them. I actually did, I looked up a demographers report, and I know that we are smack dab in the middle of a very important decade regarding aging population in Colorado, and that by twenty-thirty across the state, we're talking about over, well over, you know, a growth, a growth from twenty-twenty to twenty-thirty of over three hundred thousand seniors, sixty-five and, and older. So that, and, and as you mentioned, aging is changing. More people are aging in place, more people are working longer. There's a variety of impacts, uh, a variety of, of change in the impact and reality of what it means to be an older American and older resident here in Adams County. And so I know this is something we need to be watching very closely and looking at how we can make sure we're serving this population, and I just echo your comments. Thank you for being here. And, uh, I'm really proud that we are recognizing this month because there's a lot of opportunity and work to do in this area in the coming years. Thank you.
Just wanted to thank you. You know, I woke up to the headline this morning, um, that the Surgeon General heard it before, uh, that loneliness, especially in aging adults, is equivalent to smoking a pack of cigarettes a day. That's the impact it has. And so, um, we've talked about, as the Board of County Commissioners, um, connecting people and what loneliness looks like for all of us, from all ages and all spectrums, all different economic backgrounds. Um, so I want to thank you for your work. Uh, thank you for recognizing Meals on Wheels. It's a very important program here in Adams County. Um, it was several years ago, we were honored to cut the ribbon on the Volunteers of America. Their food production that provides meals on lunches for Meals on Wheels is right here in Adams County, so that was a welcome addition. Um, and then also our adult centers. You know, we have one in Thornton. They opened the Active Adults. Brighton has an Active Adult Center, Eagleview Active Adult Center. So everyone in that space, including our own staff that supports, um, active adults in our, uh, aging population, I really appreciate it. I do want a point of personal privilege. Um, the Director of the Eagleview Adult Center, Sue Corbett, she retired after thirty-five years serving that community. Um, she's a beloved community member. They plan to stay, uh, to my knowledge, in the Brighton community. Um, she did retire after thirty-five years, and she's that connector. She knew everybody's name, um, participant or not at the adult center, uh, has a lot. They have a whole booklet, as does the City of Thornton, on activities. They do field trips and they do all sorts of, uh, and they used to stay really local, and now they're going down to like Clarder Springs, and they go hiking and snowshoeing in the mountains, and they go up to Greeley to watch theater. And so it's just been a real joy to see, um, that community and those facilities open and to continue to have support, um, here at the county for aging adults. So thank you every day for what you do for our aging adult population, including all of us. So if you would like to stay for just, uh, actually, you can go on to the, yes, you are the, the end of our proclamation. So why don't we start with your team? We're gonna come down and take a picture with you, um, provide you the resolution, and then the next we'll have the foster care team come down. So we'll meet you right here in the front. Okay, next item on our agenda is public comment. Uh, Jamie and Erica, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do have three signed up for general comment, and it looks like several for the land use case.
Okay, let's go ahead and start with general comment, and then we'll take the land use cases as those come up.
Evan Doughty.
Good morning. If you can state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
It's Evan Doughty, one-six-five-two-three, Tower Road, Brighton, eight oh-six oh-one. I do have some, uh, photos on. A flash drive saved set, it's grease packs there, but it might be easier. I don't know if you guys can load up the flash drive or not? This is, uh, basically just a, a, uh, cry for some help on the glacial pace that code enforcement takes in, in Adams County. We had initiated a complaint against some neighbors for basically starting a business, a heavy industrial business in our A-one residential neighborhood in February twenty-twenty-four, and I would like to mention that, uh, code enforcement officer Carla, she was out there right on things. As soon as we'd make the complaint, she'd get things, go back, do the checks thirty days, the whole, the whole nine yards. Nothing ever happens. These folks just ignore it. Um, so she's at the end of her stuff. She's giving it to the district or the county attorney's office. They have taken up, they got it last summer. I had been in contact with Tara Baumgartner, or Bamford, multiple times through last fall into the, into the, uh, new year. It's in the pile, it's in the works, but there's a big stack, and it takes a long time. I had received a call from Cassandra Carlton, same thing. She says, a lot of these guys, basically the penalties aren't big enough for them to worry about stopping their zoning violations. So they just continue on and on and on, pay the penalties. It takes so long to even start the process that it's really of no big concern. Um, this particular one that has started this whole thing, these guys are operating a horizontal drilling company. They start early in the morning, a lot of times seven o'clock or so. They've got their diesels out there rattling around the trailers, getting things ready for the day's work. They end up coming back later in the evening, draining the drilling fluid all over the place. We've got wells and septics out there. We don't know what's in that draining fluid. I do have pictures of that, some of the, you can see them draining the fluids. Um, the gentleman who owns the actual business doesn't even live here. That's one of the things that the zoning requires, that if you have a business, you also live there. He doesn't own the place, he doesn't live there. His business is actually registered in Westminster. So, uh, my, my biggest thing is, I think a lot of this has to do with state law, but you guys have better connections and better pull with state guys than us, we folk do. So we'd like to ask your help. Um, is there a way to talk with the state about making an escalating penalty, uh, for some of these scoff laws? These guys, according to the, the folks, and they're frustrated down at the county attorney's office, they've got stacks of these things, and they said, you know, it takes forever to get through it because there's so many, and there's more and more every day. Sometimes the judges barely make any penalty at all, so it really has little effect. And if we can work with the state and get an escalating penalty thing so that these guys go, oh, you know, it might cost me fifty dollars a day now, but as this goes on, it's gonna be a hundred dollars a day, two, five, a thousand dollars a day, so that there's some real teeth. These poor county guys, I mean, they work for all of us. They're struggling. They're swamped with this stuff, and, uh, when I was talking with Cassandra last, she says, this is not even one of the worst offenders in, in the town.
So you're.
Did we have the pictures at all?
We did have, she did, um, pictures did come up to us. You're, you're at time right now.
Okay.
Um, the, thank you for your comments. So public comments period, just as part of process, is really an opportunity for citizens to come and communicate with the board. Um, it's not necessarily a back and forth dialogue. So we thank you for your comments, and we can follow up on those. Um, Erica and Jamie, who do you have next?
Kristen Doughty.
So you can please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak.
My name is Kristen Doughty. I live at one-six-five-two-three Tower Road. Um, same thing as, as my husband was speaking of, and there's also several other people in our neighborhood that could not be here, but we really do need help. And we, this has been going on for well over a year. It's not just this one company, but what they're, we're having happen is construction companies are coming into our neighborhood. We're zoned A-one, so you can have livestock. If you have a business inside of your house, you're allowed to have that, but they're bringing construction material. Um, we just had another neighbor who decided to open up an RV storage place within the last few weeks, and there's now about twelve RVs out there, plus semi-trucks, plus taco trucks, plus everything else. Um, there's another, uh, place that has probably twenty to thirty abandoned vehicles on their property. Now this is, the property is, this is a development. It's located between Tower Road and Telluride, one sixty-fourth and one sixty-eighth. So nothing is happening. It's getting worse and worse. It's another business that has semi-trucks out there. Um, we have the one directly behind us with all this construction material with the horizontal, um, drilling. There, they have pipes in the ground, and they are dumping material, and they are contacting the EPA. Who is? Thank you. So they're, they're dumping. They're probably pretty close to the same, so that's fine, but they're dumping, uh, material into the ground. Uh, we have wells out there. We're having no help on any of these issues. They have several large storage containers. They have big semi-truck, uh, trailers parked. They have several large storage containers. They have big semi truck, uh, trailers parked out there. It's just, it's just beyond frustrating. And again, the, the county people that are out there have been saying that this is what these people do. They come into these places, they buy the property, and they know the penalties are not going to be enough to deter them from running these businesses out there. And we're just helpless. So we try to obey the law, we try to do the right things, but there's not enough sting to make it go away. And I think that if they had the penalties at an appropriate level to where they felt like it would really hurt their businesses and not just a part of doing their business, that it would eliminate the problem, you'd keep it out of the courts because they would take care of it themselves without it ever getting to that level. The people in the county that are out there all the time trying to deal with it, you, they wouldn't be so stretched. Okay, so that's, we're looking for direction, we're looking for help, we're looking how to escalate this at the state level and what you can do at the county level as well.
Thank you so much for your comments. So is there someone from the staff that can follow up, um, with the couple? Get the, I have their address, I can certainly provide it. I don't know which department, if it's county attorney or sounds like it could be a number of departments, code enforcement. Um, we can just follow up with them by the end of the comment period.
I think we have one more too.
Yes, and we do have one more. So Jamie and Erica?
Christina Perez.
Good morning. If you can state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to talk.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Christina Perez, and I reside at one, six, four, eight, six Yampaway. And I am speaking also on behalf of my, um, other neighbors, Evan and Kristin, that were just up here. So I will keep it brief, but, um, the construction noise is so horrible that it's actually disturbing, um, the livestock and our pets as well. So, um, as a A1 residential neighborhood, they come, and it's really hard for the county, obviously, to come out at six, seven o'clock in the morning, and then seven o'clock, eight o'clock at night when they return with all their equipment to witness what is happening. But, um, I live closest to this property that, um, we are bringing to your attention. And, um, Commissioner Baca, I did send an email to you last week about some of the concerns. So, um, just to circle back, um, I live closest to this property, and they are actually, um, digging and bearings, I would assume, boring, um, waste. And like, um, Mr. Doughty and Mrs. Doughty, um, stated, I don't know what's in that waste material, but in any event, it still does not need to be, um, discarded in a residential neighborhood. So, um, again, we're just wanting, um, a follow-up and just support to help deal with it because, um, it's ground contamination as far as I'm concerned. So I thank you all for your time.
Thank you so much. Jamie, do we have anyone else under public comment?
I believe the rest are for the, um, land use case.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, elected official communication. Commissioner Pinter.
Yeah, thank you. And, and the Chair, Chair Baca gave some comments as well. Um, I appreciate that, um, public comment is not a back and forth. You guys come and make a comment, we take it under advisement, then we tell staff to talk to you. That's generally how it works. Um, what I'd also like to flag is to make sure that you're doing outreach to our oil and gas division as well as to our public health department. Um, I realize you're put in, in a really, uh, difficult position as you've described it. Uh, we have been having meetings as a board with our code enforcement team at some, and trying to, um, get at the generalized concern, not this property, but the concern that you're raising on how do we have enforcement actions when there are clear violations? It's certainly something that's openly being talked about. And I would hope that somebody, um, from community economic development who works on land use could be talking with these folks as they head out to try to get some answers, um, on what land uses are available in A1 because I'm kind of skeptical that the land uses you're describing are available in A1. I know what you're talking about, a home-based business, but that, what you're describing goes beyond that in my understanding. So I just hope that you're talked to as you head out. I know the clerk stopped to offer her information. I also, um, because it is the Tuesday after Memorial Day, I did want to pause and comment and thank our staff for putting together, uh, our annual remembrance on Memorial Day. We have a beautiful veterans memorial. I was out there with several of my colleagues. Uh, the way we do it in Adams County is a quiet reflection over the three-day weekend where flowers, uh, representing the different branches of service are available to be laid at our veterans memorial. And I know that many from the community partook, I know that I did, as well as, um, several of my colleagues on the Board of County Commission, and thank our Parks and Rec team for putting together, um, a ceremony that continues over the three days where folks can come with their family members or alone to have their own private remembrance or a community remembrance for those we've lost um, in the military service, because that's, uh, the core of what Memorial Day is about, um, is that reflection and, and gratitude. So thanks again to our Parks team for hosting that and our Veterans Service Commission.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hudson.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Uh, just wanted to say thank you, thank you to the residents who came and spoke. It's very important that we are alerted to situations like this, uh, as they're happening in our community. And a lot, I agree with very, a lot of what Commissioner Pinter said, that, uh, possibly our public health department can be of assistance as well. But this is a conversation we're having. Um, I also dealt with situations similar to this in my time on Thornton City Council, uh, different, different land uses varying from maybe what was, what's zoned and also, uh, enforcement, how, how we handle enforcement. So thank you for coming in today. Uh, yes, Memorial Day, uh, the Memorial Day event on Friday was beautiful at our veterans memorial. It was lovely to honor our veterans and all who have served and of course, thank their families for their sacrifice and their service to our, to our country and our democracy. And, uh, it's my sincere hope that none, that no one has served or died in vain in the defense of democracy and our American freedoms. Next week, uh, several of us will be attending, attending the Colorado Counties Incorporated, uh, annual summer conference. So we will not be having a public hearing next Tuesday on June third. This is an important conference for those, for us to attend, to hear what's happening across the state and to highlight also, uh, see what our colleagues are doing, see how other communities are handling various issues that, that many, will be impacting many counties across the state, and also to flag national issues, uh, that we will need to be tracking here as we lead the county. So I look forward to that. Uh, and thank you again to all of our staff who work in our foster care and with our aging adults. Um, the Thornton Active Adult Board was the first civic board I served on, and, uh, this work is, that work is near and dear to my heart. And both of these programs have a significant impact on family stabilization and the health and welfare of our county. And so I look forward to continuing in that work with staff here in Adams County, and I thank you all again for your contributions in those departments. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Um, next item on our agenda, oh, I'm so sorry. Commissioner Odoricio, go ahead.
I wanna, I wanna thank the folks that came out, uh, to the parade yesterday at the Commerce City Memorial Day Parade. There was a lot of celebration and recognition and reflection, uh, of all of the sacrifices of our veterans and veteran families. I appreciate, uh, seeing everyone come together as a community. Uh, I was remiss last week. I didn't get a chance to also thank, uh, Public Works for the neighborhood cleanups. They've been doing those trash collection days, and, um, I usually was able to get out there and then I had a family issue that came up that got in the way of that matter. Uh, but I will tell you that it is extremely important, and I think we could get an update on all of the tons and tons of trash that is removed from our neighborhoods and our communities. Uh, I also want to thank the folks, and I know they're leaving, uh, thank the folks that came in and, and discussed some issues in our neighborhoods. Um, the neighborhood cleanups, we're also working internally on addressing issues of blight nuisance and non-compliance. So we appreciate, uh, everyone continuing to report issues that they see in the community to the county so we can track, document, and follow up. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, attended some of the same events as the other commissioners. Uh, I know the, the folks that spoke, uh, had left the room, but I would just like to acknowledge, um, that changes have been made on outdoor storage, um, here in Adams County and what that looks like. Um, primarily the vehicles that they were talking about, also ground contamination, et cetera, et cetera. Um, into my board, we have a couple of new members of the board, uh, the pressures on our A1 districts, A1 zoning of people continuing to put pressure on our A1 intended for ag. It stands for ag, agricultural one districts, um, that now there are peripheral businesses as we move away from a more suburban urban county, um, out east, even out north, which is I think where these folks were live, where they live, um, north of, north of Brighton, um, is the pressure on ag, and what does that look like? And, you know, all uses are not compatible with the ag one district, as Commissioner Pinter had mentioned. So just want to bring that up. So next on our agenda is the consent calendar. We only have three items.
I will move to approve the con, oh, I will not, I will second. Emma, Commissioner Emma Pinter's.
I'm going to approve the consent calendar, and I appreciate the second from Commissioner Hudson.
Happy to second.
I'm also excited that's not two pages of consent, so.
And the motion passes four with one absent. Next item on our agenda is new business under county manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item of new business is a resolution approving a purchase order to Four Rivers Equipment in the amount of one million, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars for the purchase of four John Deere motor graders. Here to present is Mike Uterus of, uh, Facilities and Fleet.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mike Uterus, Fleet Operations Manager. Our motor grader's primary function is for routine service grading of gravel roads. They're also used in urgent emergency grading, reconstruction of gravel roads, and they're also used in snow removal during our snow events. We have budgeted to replace four motor graders in twenty twenty-five that have reached and exceeded its full useful life cycle. We will replace these motor graders with John Deere seven, seven, two GP models. We will be using Sourcewell and their cooperative purchasing agreement. List price for each motor grader is eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars minus the Sourcewell discount of forty-five percent and an additional multi-unit government discount. Cost for each motor grader will be four hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. We are recommending that a purchase order be issued to Four Rivers Equipment for four John Deere seven, seven, two GP motor graders for a not to exceed amount of one million, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars. Are there any questions?
Questions from the board. Commissioner Hudson.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. What is the lifespan, what is the average lifespan of a grader like this?
So, uh, before, I think it was like nine, uh, two thousand and nineteen, it used to be ten years, which is a hundred and twenty months. And then we shortened the life cycle to eighty-four months due to all the issues we started having with, uh, high expense items like transmissions, engines. So currently it's eighty-four months.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, and, uh, just for my own, because I, uh, just still trying to make sure I understand this, did, did this, was this a competitive bid process?
Uh, Sourcewell is a, a, uh, kind of a bid that each manufacturer does through Sourcewell. And it's, it's basically been pre-bid already, and then we get the, the discounts.
Sourcewell, okay, all right. Uh, thank you. And so, so the anticipated lifespan for each of these new ones would be eighty-four months?
Yes, I, I currently have a motor grader at John Deere and, um, it has a transmission issue and it's like fifty-five thousand dollars. So we're trying to eliminate that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Pinter? No, oh, Odoricio?
The transmission is how much it costs to replace?
Fifty-four thousand.
And then how much are each of these new?
Four hundred and fifty-four thousand.
Got it. Um, and now, the, the reason I ask is we went from ten years down to seven. And so I think that's just good for us to recognize that as a matter of policy, we did that. And so is there a difference in warranty at seven versus past seven?
So what we do when we purchase the graders, we purchase a seven-year, and I think it's seventy-five hundred extended warranty with the machine. So it's basically covered for the full life.
I, I appreciate that. It's good to know. And then if there's ever a question in the future, um, we could bring it back and have it as a policy discussion. But, uh, is that policy written anywhere for the seven years?
Uh, no, it's just part of our replacement schedule.
Okay, somewhere we might want to document it with a discussion of how we got to that point and why.
Sure.
So people don't ask in the future, well, who made this decision and why? I think that's important for us to make sure that the folks know, because if it cuts, um, if it cuts the, the lifespan of what we're, then it increases the turnover that we have. And I think that's a good question for policy for us to have. Like to hear what the, uh, what the policy and is for the other types of equipment too, not from you today. I think it's a good discussion for us to have in the future. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions? I'll take a lost on my computer here. Motion to approve.
I would make a motion to approve the resolution approving a purchase order for Four Rivers Equipment in the amount of not to exceed one million, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars for the purchase of four John Deere motor graders and for its approval.
I'll second that. The motion passes four with one absent. Okay, Dave?
Thank you. Your second item of business is a resolution approving agreement between Adams County and Environmental Serv, Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated in the amount of one million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for geographic information systems, software, and professional services. I think Jason Schultz, IT, ITI Director is with us. Thank you, Jason.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Schultz, Director of Information Technology and Innovation. Uh, the item before you today is a renewal of our three-year agreement, um, as County Manager stated, with Environmental Systems Research Institute, or ESRI for short, for our geographic information systems. We use, um, geographic information systems in a number of different departments countywide, uh, including Public Works, Community Economic Development, Clerk and Recorder, Office of Emergency Management, Parks and Open Space, and Information Technology and Innovation. Uh, we entered a three-year agreement with ESRI in twenty twenty-two. Um, since then, our usage of, um, that technology has expanded between two hundred and fifty and seven hundred and fifty percent, depending on the department. Um, our two biggest, uh, growth areas were Public Works and Health Department. Um, we are asking to renew our three-year agreement, um, for a total of one million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand over three years. Those are, um, billed annually, so year one would be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Year two is four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and year three would be five hundred thousand dollars. And as part of this, um, agreement, we will be increasing our licenses as well as getting some additional tools that will help streamline our processes, integrating GIS with a number of different systems across the enterprise for data fabric structure. Um, and we're also, uh, this will give us, uh, some additional information, including detailed demographics, some socioeconomic census data, so we can, um, help with our data-driven decisions. So our recommendation would be to approve, um, for another three years, our, uh, agreement with, uh, ESRI.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Um, I, ESRI is industry standard. I'd love for us to, I'm going to approve this for sure. Um, I, I would like, uh, to know that, uh, in the future, like, there's, I know there's some functionality we also don't use yet at ESRI. And so, um, I'd be looking, very open to listening to some of the new innovative things that, that they do offer in the future. And I don't know which parts of the licensing are included in this or not, but I will move to approve if there's no other questions from your board. Nope, uh, then I will, if I could get to. I will move to approve as presented. Thank you.
Second.
The motion passes four, uh, four to, four with one absent.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Okay, Dave?
Thank you. Your, uh, third and final order of new business is a resolution approving Amendment Six between Adams County and Hammond Infrastructure in the amount of eight hundred and forty thousand, fifty-five dollars and fifty-two cents for the fifty-eighth Avenue Construction Project. As you can see, here to present is Public Works Director, Brian Staley.
Good morning, Commissioners. So I'm here today to present change order eighteen for East Fifty-Eighth Avenue's, uh, capital improvement project. We're proposing an eight hundred and forty thousand, fifty-five dollar and fifty-two cent adjustment to the contract amount. This change order is the final cost modification for the project and represents negotiated overhead costs resulting from, uh, extended project duration specifically tied to utility-related delays. As context, these costs are tied closely to the previously approved change order nine, uh, which addressed prolonged dry utility delays caused most notably by Excel Energy. Uh, approval of this change order will finalize the contract amount at twenty-six point seven-three million and allow the county to move forward with project closeout. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the board? Commissioner Odoricio?
Yeah, I, uh, I'm looking at your after-action report here that, and I didn't get a chance. Is that in the, um, is that in the agenda for the public to review?
It is not yet. This is a, a late-breaking report that we will schedule a follow-up study session to go, go over in detailed analysis with the board on.
Right. I would like, because it did have some bearing on the decision today, for it to be added to the today's, as it was written today, since it has bearing on the decision today. Uh, it looks like there have been a lot of challenges in this, which I think we've kind of known. What I appreciate about the report is it summarizes all of this into a very large comprehensive report that shows the history um, of this project as well as the additional expenditures, uh, arising from some of those, uh, challenges. Um, I do think that, uh, there's definitely some, some items in here that, that need to be addressed. And that includes both internally and externally. So I look forward to having that study session. With that said, um, today's, uh, change order. This is another long line of, well, we really can't do anything about it. We're almost stuck. Let's get the gas over barrel to continue adding. What, what do you anticipate being the next few steps in this entire project? So we can be prepared for potential more change orders or problems?
So we, we don't anticipate any further change orders. Project closeout for construction is, uh, coming up later on in June with punch list items to be completed. We're partnering with Parks, Open Space and Cultural Arts on a mural project for the project to be completed later this year. Uh, following that, we'll, uh, work on, uh, scheduling a ribbon-cutting ceremony with the community and invite all of you to celebrate the completion of the project.
I, with that said, thank you very much. I move to approve as presented.
Yes, Commissioner Henson.
Uh, thank you. Yes, thank, thank you, Brian. And thank you for this, this report. And I am seeing here on page thirty-one, uh, about some steps that we're hoping to take moving forward. I do, yeah, I share, uh, Commissioner Odoricio's concern, uh, as, and I think we've had some discussions about this over timeline, um, with some of our partners. It, I know it's been challenging for, um, some of our residents and, and, and for everybody involved when a project exceeds the timeline, um, more than one, that more, and has more than one extension on it. So I'm hoping that this is something we can definitely use to, uh, to improve ourselves and our processes and see how we can get, get better. I know there are always un, believe me, I know. There are many always unforeseen things that come up in projects like this, but, um, it's always in everybody's best interest that we, that we and our partners are as nimble as possible and can react to things and pivot as needed to make sure that we can really deliver for the residents. So thank you for the report and I look forward to our future discussions on these types of projects. And I will second that motion.
So I just have a couple of things to add. Um, first of all, I know that we recently saw Excel Energy and they've made a commitment to meet with our staff, um, once a month to go over projects and challenges. Um, Excel about three years ago was having their own challenges and I really want to commend you, Brian, that, um, you know, in our study sessions, but not on record, um, we've not had, to my knowledge, anyone call out Excel Energy. And they're all of our service providers, um, whether it's residential, they're providers to our businesses here in the county, um, many cities and also including Adams County, we do a lot of these road, roadway projects and, um, what's in the ground is iffy here in the county. We have a really colorful past of, of land abuse. Um, and what does that look like for us? And so I know that's part of the challenge as well. Um, I just want to put it out there that if we were elected to represent the people and we're not, I can't speak for the board, it is our duty to also meet with utility companies. Um, we just ran into one yesterday, the Commerce City Parade, um, not Excel Energy, a different utility company. Um, that we work well with them as well and where we want to leverage with, with saving money for our residents on these programs and projects that we have going on. Um, it is our, our responsibility to also leverage, um, and have enter into conversations with Excel Energy when it doesn't interfere with the staff. But these are really important. These are multimillion-dollar projects. I want to thank you. Um, I'm going to support today uh, for project, so we get towards project closeout. Um, it's really important for all those businesses along Fifty-Eighth that are east of Washington, um, that they get back to normal and that, that hill, and if you've been in the area, you know what I'm talking about. That hill did not have any type of access. It didn't have any driveway access. It had no pet access. Probably wasn't, um, the best hill in the wintertime. It's fairly steep and we have a lot of in, industry, industrial, um, at the bottom of that hill. So I think they'll be happy to get back to business on this. So today I'm going to go ahead and, um, support this. Thank you so much for being here. Commissioners need a vote. We have our support, uh, four with one absent. Thank you, Brian.
And this will be one of the best ribbon-cutting that we've had. You guys have definitely earned it. So thank you.
Yeah, sure. We have some big projects out there. So County Attorney and Executive Sessions.
Nothing from the County Attorney's Office.
Okay, thank you so much. And the staff needs some time for land use to set up, about five minutes. So why don't we come back? We'll reconvene at ten-thirty. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Jamie. Time is ten-thirty and let's go ahead and reconvene our meeting. We're going to open with the land use hearings. So if you have staff ready for the land use. Just the one.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Leah Campbell. I'm a planner with the Community and Economic Development Department. And the case before you is VAC twenty-twenty-five dash one, Holly Street Vacation at one oh eight five one Holly Street. Um, so the request is to vacate a portion of Holly Street that serves as a boundary line between the city of Thornton and, and Adams County per CRS forty-three dash two dash three oh three. The subject right-of-way, as well as the, um, property that it will be vacated to, is within the city of Thornton. It's not within unincorporated Adams County. But because it is adjacent to unincorporated Adams County, um, this state statute says that we also have to review it. Um, the city of Thornton did approve the right-of-way vacation in March of this year. Um, and this, the subject right-of-way, as well as the property adjacent to it, was annexed into the city of Thornton last year from Adams County. Um, so here is an aerial view of the site. I did put a icon of the entire county so you could orient. It's, um, in the western portion of the county, again, within the jurisdiction of the city of Thornton. Um, here is Riverdale Road to the east of the subject right-of-way. And then here's east one hundred and twelfth Ave, just to orient you. And then, um, here is a zoomed-in aerial. This yellow portion is a, a rough outline of the right-of-way that will be vacated. And then the, um, property highlighted in blue is the, um, property that the right-of-well, right-of-way will be vacated to. Um, east one hundred and tenth Ave is to the north and again Riverdale Road is to the east here. Um, and here's the current zoning map. Um, uh, most of these property or the subject property, as well as all these properties to the west are, again, within the city of Thornton. And these properties to the, um, south as well. And then, um, the properties to the, to the east are zoned A1. There's also some R3, um, and some PUDP in the area as well. And here's the future land use map. Um, there's a little bit of residential low, as well as some agricultural, small-scale and agricultural, large-scale in the area. Um, so here's the criteria staff uses when reviewing for a right-of-way vacation. Uh, it complies with the development standards and original conditions of approval. Non-conforming lots are not created or increased in non-conformity. It is consistent with the purpose and intent of the subdivision regulations. There's no detriment to the public health, safety and welfare. No adjoining lands left without access to an established public road. And if the roadway is a state or federal highway, the vacation has been approved by the State Transportation Commission. Um, so let's take a look at the proposed vacation plot and talk about some of that criteria. So, um, I'm going to pause for a second while we get some hearing aid. Can you hear me okay? Awesome. Okay. Um, so I have highlighted the proposed right-of-way in yellow and then, um, the blue is unincorporated Adams County, um, just to give you some reference points. So, um, again, because the right-of-way and property that it's going to is not within Adams County, it's not really subject to subdivision regulations and standards. Um, but we were able to determine that all adjacent or adjoining properties will maintain access, um, to a public right-of-way. So there will be no, um, properties left without access. We were able to determine that, um, all properties will maintain access to services, utilities will remain in easements. There's no fire access concerns. Um, so in reviewing this, we were able to determine that there's no detriment to the public good and, um, access will be maintained. And then it's not a state or federal highway, so we didn't have to get approval from them. Um, so here are, uh, photos of the right-of-way. So here we're looking north and this up here is one hundred and tenth Avenue, east one hundred and tenth. And then here we're looking south along the, um, right-of-way that will be vacated. The subject property that it will be vacated to is, uh, to the right here. Um, so eight notifications were sent. They were sent to all adjacent property owners, all property owners adjacent to the right-of-way. Um, one comment was received from, um, a property owner on Riverdale Road. Um, not necessarily about this right-of-way vacation, but she has had some trouble with some infrastructure that the city of Thornton has, um, constructed, um, that's flooding her property. So we had some conversations about that. There's letters in the, in your packet from her. Um, and then the, the applicant has been reaching, has talked to her and has been reaching out to the city of Thornton to try to help that process along to try to get her some relief, um, with what's going on there. Um, and then all applicable referral agencies were notified of this request and there's, um, any comments of concern have been resolved. So there's no ongoing comments of, of concern. Um, so staff feels that there are no com, non-conform lots created, there's no adverse impact and all access is maintained. So in the case of VAC twenty-twenty-five dash one, we're recommending approval of the roadway vacation with six findings of fact. And here are the findings of fact. Um, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Great. Thank you so much. So I'm just going to go over the land use process. We start with the staff presentation. Then it's questions from the board and county commissioners for staff. The applicant will have, we are the applicant in this case? No. Oh, hello there. Um, applicant will come down to make a presentation. Questions from the board for the applicant and then we'll get to public comment. So if you're here for public comment, um, we'll call on you at that time. You'll have three minutes to speak. Um, the applicant may respond if requested, uh, commissioner discussion, and then we'll go to a motion. So at this time, uh, questions from the board for staff. Commissioner Henson?
Thank you. So is the access into the Grange Creek neighborhood immediately north of the, I believe that's immediately north of the, um, proposed vacation? proposed vacation? Actually, can you go to the photograph? It's more visible on the photograph.
This one?
No. Oh, photo, the, yeah. So on the photo, on the left side of the screen, just behind that barrier, the orange and white barrier, that is access into the Grange Creek neighborhood. Is that going to be maintained?
That will be maintained, yeah.
Okay, great. And then looking south on the right-hand side, that is the roadway. We're talking about this particular piece of roadway where you're putting, moving the arrow right now.
Correct.
That, and that's what we're being asked to vacate, although it's not, we're agreeing to it because it's not inside unincorporated Adams. It is part of the City of Thornton. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And so just the roadway and then we're not, that's the only part, that's the only piece of property we're being, or is it, how how much beyond the road are we being asked to vacate?
Just this portion of roadway.
Just the pavement, just the, just the asphalt area there?
Yeah, so just what's depicted on this vacation plot.
Okay. And so would this be, do you know, is this for, is there a future, is there intention for future development? Is that why they're asking for the vacation or?
Yes, that's my understanding that um the property to the um west of the roadway will be developing. Um, and the applicant is here if you have questions about that.
Yes, and I will ask him. I just was, I just was curious what uh what staff's understanding was.
Yeah.
Of of that. And so you say to the west of Holly is where they're planning to.
Yes.
Okay. Can you go back to the other, to one of the aerial maps that you had there?
Yeah, so this property, oh, sorry, aerial. Um, this property that's highlighted in blue, that's what will be developing.
Ah, okay. Thank, yes, thank you for the highlight there. Okay. And currently is that do we know, do we have any numbers um of how many, I mean, it's inside the City of Thornton, so I guess, so maybe they are keeping this data of how many, is that, it doesn't connect, it is a dead end currently, isn't it? Holly doesn't, when you go south, it was when you go south along the property there, it doesn't, there's, it doesn't connect to Riverdale. So.
That's my understanding, that it doesn't connect there. And it, the access currently is blocked off, so no one is accessing Riverdale.
Right, yes, right, you had the arrow on the south, the, yeah, the south portion here, the, yeah, there's no, that is not connected access there. Is that correct?
Good morning, Commissioners. Ian Cortez, uh Public Works, uh uh Rideway Supervisor. You're correct, there's barricades at the, at Riverdale Road at Holly, as well as the signage that were showed in presentation.
Okay, thank you. That's, I wanted to confirm. I actually know that I, I, it's one of these things, you know, I know the area, I do drive along Riverdale Road, but then this land, this case came up and I was having trouble mentally, you know, get, coming up with that picture in my mind's eye of making sure I understood what, where the access did and did not occur. Okay, those are all the questions I have at this time. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. So just to clarify, the whole area in blue has been annexed into Thornton?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the yellow is the the roadway that to be vacated?
Correct. Okay, that was also annexed into Thornton.
Also annexed into Thornton. Okay, thank you so much. All right, next we have, there are no further questions. Commissioner Odricio. Um, go ahead.
Okay, um, so I appreciate the question. So the, it's not accessible now, but the whole goal was at one point to make it accessible. It, in in the past, that's why it connected basically Riverdale via this section of Holly, correct?
Yes, for the record, uh the right of way was acquired in nineteen eighty by two landowners.
Yeah, that that makes sense. And so the, at the time, they were probably wanting to have that connection to either north or south, and at that time, it made sense that the most mature road would have been Riverdale. By doing this vacation, we're effectively also removing it as potentially becoming an entrance onto Riverdale.
Right, and let me say this, there is, for safety purposes, where one hundred and tenth meets Holly at that intersection, we, it goes up to a little, goes up to the north and meets uh Riverdale Road in a much safer ninety-degree intersection for visibility in both directions, as opposed to this oblique angle.
I, I agree, uh in looking at this. I know that one of the things that we have, there's actually a Riverdale Road plan from last century. You guys, it's interesting, it's so really old. No, I don't remember what the actual date was, it was just a long time ago. But I do remember us, one of the uh strategic and policy goals was to try to reduce the number of entrances onto Riverdale Road for the sake of perp- safety purposes. So I I will support this. What I would like to hear is if there's folks in the audience that have some concerns about what this could do to their property, or if there's other issues that they have. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Um, next, we're gonna have the applicant come down and make a presentation. We need your name and address for the record. Um, then it's questions from the board, and then we'll have public comment.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, thank you for having me. Colin Bowman, Vector Development, two five four East Fifth Street, Loveland, Colorado. Um, I don't have any further uh presentation. I appreciate planning, uh laying this out uh so thoroughly. I just will kind of open up, you know, a little entry comments uh to hopefully clarify a few things. Um, as we kind of just discussed, the Holly Street there had former intentions. Uh, prior to us owning it, we've owned the property for about five years now, um, from that homeowner there who let that house kind of dilapidate and become a problem. We uh we do plan on developing, and um as said, we have annexed into Thornton, so all of our submittals and all of our approvals, we have gone through the multi-year process with Thornton through conceptual and all that to uh put residences on that property. Their uh recommendation, and most of this has come through them, as to why uh this vacation has come, is their public utilities are very much running through that right of way and how we're connecting it, but most importantly, to the south tip of that uh vacation of the right of way, the regional trail dead ends, and it actually kind of starts coming onto our property. Um, currently, it just kind of dead ends into asphalt and just dumps into that uh that road that you've seen that Holly used to be, or and kind of has been barricaded off there. Um, the approvals that we have are to extend that trail to regional trail standards and connect it over to one hundred and tenth street. So uh through Thornton, um and through uh the hopeful approval of our subdivision there, we are essentially um being required by Thornton to attempt to improve this area by connecting the trail uh to their standards, ten-foot-wide concrete trail uh lighted landscaped to improve everything. Uh, the only additional comment I I would probably have to hopefully alleviate any concerns of the neighbor properties is um on the southern portion of our property, south of the house that's depicted, uh there is an easement for the City of Thornton, that that is a Grange Creek uh detention pond where stormwater runs through. Um, Thornton is quite honestly has not um enforced them uh keeping that detention pond. Um, again, that is on our property, but used to be an easement. We will be improving that to accept uh any of our future houses, but also um bringing that up to current code standards, um as well as we have already um entered in and improved the agricultural ditch by uh relocating and piping that through. So any water concerns or storm concerns, as it does flow towards the county lines, are uh being improved through our pro- uh, you know, through our progress through the city and any future development. Um, we also, like you said, uh right on the northern side of this property, there is one neighbor access through the driveway just to the north of this right of way. We, we also very much have spoken to him um and have his support and willingness to actually, if need be, uh sign on our plat, uh we will be you know, repaving his driveway, because this corner has quite honestly become a dumping grounds for garbage for just people are throwing couches out there because it's a quiet corner that's just caught between county lines and city lines. Um, so uh as far as our direct neighbors there, we have had that support to improve this and make this a you know, a better situation for them. And of course, um a- anybody who has um comment here today, I know we've spoken to some of them who have some infrastructure questions and concerns regarding Riverdale and the stuff surrounding us, but most of, all of our property is contained within Thornton. We have gone through public hearing processes where everybody um who has any objection to the development has been able to speak on. So other than that, I have no further comment and happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you so much, Colin, for being here. Questions from the board? Yes, Commissioner Henson.
Thank you. Thanks for being here today. What uh is, is this going to be residential development?
Yes, we would have uh thirty-seven residences proposed.
Single-family detached or paired homes?
We, we are zoned for paired homes.
Okay, great. Um, and you said, so you're doing trail, the city is asking you, you're doing some trail improvements and also, and then what direction was the property that is having drainage concerns?
Uh, I've heard the concerns, and we've uh, we've talked to the resident across Riverdale Road.
Okay.
Um, that they've had some concerns. Um, I mean, quite honestly, we're working through the city with it, but their, their drains does not necessarily touch our property. It is, they're probably, their concerns are coming from the west side of Riverdale, which is right on the boundary of this vacation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we are definitely in communication with the city and with her to lend our support if we, if we are doing grading in there to improve that trail. If it's something that we can assist in, we, we have open communication as far as that.
And where on uh this, on your property, is there, you said there'll be a detention pond?
Uh, so there's an existing detention pond just south of that house. Um, basically that big plot of land where you see the ditch kind of running through there on the south.
Mm-hmm.
That entire triangle, all the way up to where you kind of see that uh dirt road access to the backside of the house.
Yes.
Is graded detention pond right now. Uh, yeah, right where her cursor is, a little bit south of that.
Yeah.
So right where that cut through, that is all uh graded down and into a detention pond that has um lots of trees that have just been neglected down in there, and uh we, through our city approval process, have to improve that. We have to put in new structures. We have to of course obey all upgraded code to improve that.
And do you think uh it, it, do you think that uh by updating that and improving that to current, to the current um IRC standards, that would be, that that might address some of the issue for the property owner to the east of Riverdale Road? I know you can't guarantee any, I'm just asking.
As I say, to my knowledge, that's not the source of her problem. Um, she, I, I believe she's having issues from culvers uh on either side of Riverdale, taking on surface water um all the way from the south. Our property is contained and has a current outlet structure that is piped under the road. We are just expanding and improving that. But if there is any future concern of that, because it does hit county lines, we are enlarging it and bringing it up to higher standards.
Okay, uh thank you. Those are the questions I have at this time.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Other Commissioners? Okay, if you'd like to have a seat, and we'll ask for public comment. Thank you, Colin. Okay, so at this time, um Erica and Jamie, do you have anyone sign up for public comment? I think you had two or three. Okay. If you'd like to call on them.
Lily, I'm having trouble reading the last name. Ewing.
Good morning. If you state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes to address the board.
Good morning. My name is Lily Ewing. I live at ten eight hundred Riverdale Road. And um I am very concerned about this new project. It's uphill of my property. Twenty-five years ago, Thornton, the City of Thornton put a pipe underneath the road. Gave me a lake on my north side of my property. Since then, they supposedly fixed it, but now the pipes are broken. I cannot get Thornton to do anything about it, and now they're gonna put twenty-nine houses up there. Riverdale Road is a um historical road. They can't widen it. I've got multiple traffic on there. You can't get out of that house half the time because of the traffic. The road is in bad shape. They put a sewer cover over the corner of my driveway. I don't know where this water is going, but now you put a project up there with twenty-nine houses. It's gonna create sixty-some cars going down that road. I don't see any way of access. McKay Road is also limited as to being widened because of the Eppinger plan to give that to Adams County for open space. I talked to Mark Bowman, and he said he would help me with this property, but I don't saw, see how he can avoid the water coming on my property. I have a straight fence that's now a big V into the ground. And it's also pointing east. And garbage is being dumped right at that point because it's a big sinkhole. I don't know where I could get this property fixed. The City of Thornton has not answered any of my letters. I sent a copy of that letter that I sent to the Planning Board, which was seven pages long. So I have a lot of concerns. I don't think that this development is gonna help me. Now, a hundred-year storm, well, we know Colorado. Colorado is not going to uh is not conducive to weather. We could have a hundred-year storm next year. And that is gonna end up with my beachfront property, that I don't want beachfront property. When I did this twenty-five years ago, supposedly they fixed it and drained all the water to the agricultural ditch. But now with twenty-nine more houses going up there, electricity, water, sewer, it's gonna come in my property. Some way, it's contaminated my water, it's contaminated my well, and all of the property. I have to buy drinking water because I can't use the water out of my well. And I've asked the City of Thornton, all they told me was I should call risk management. They told me to hire a lawyer. I'm a widow who lives on a limited income, and I'm working four jobs to pay for what I can. And I still can't hire a lawyer because I don't have the money to do that. But I would find a lawyer who would take this on contingency if that was the case that I had to do that. All I've ever asked is for them to fix my property, and now you're gonna put some property, twenty-nine houses out there. There's no access to the roads except through Riverdale, Holly, and McKay. You can't widen McKay, you can't widen Riverdale. And Holly Road ends right there at McKay and Riverdale.
So you're at time. I appreciate your comments.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie?
Earl Geis.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Richard, again, I can't read the last name.
Yeah. I think we know everyone except for the three members from the public, so, okay. I think that's it. Thank, thank you, Jamie. Um, anyone want an app, a response from the applicant? For any items, Commissioner Pinter?
I, I don't have a, I don't have an applicant question. I have more of a staff question. Um, but if you, so like, if there isn't an applicant question, I have a staff question that may turn into an applicant question. I'm also happy to wait.
So the next after applicant response, if requested, I don't see any requests, then we're at Commissioner discussion.
Okay, so, hi. Staff, I need some help here with the the valid concerns expressed from the public, and I understand that um the uh Lily's comments were mostly about historic drainage issues. But this sometimes comes up, where there are historic drainage issues that are exacerbated by a new proposed development. And I, I imagine you guys have done some engineering reports, so that this proposed development, which is, you know, fine in its proposal and construction and density and, you know, things that are being proposed. But the drainage issues are real and appear to be at an, at a crux as we are trying to move forward with this otherwise very rational development proposal. So what studies have you done? What, what do the engineers say? What can be done? What communications there with the City of Thornton? Can you give us some background in history so that we don't inadvertently exacerbate an already troubling issue with well water um contamination and flood and drainage?
Sure, thank you for the question. Jen Wetter, Planning and Development Manager. Um, because this property is located within the City of Thornton, we are only a referral agency. We don't often review the technical uh applic- or the the technical submittal items. Um, I just reached out to the staff uh on our team that do review those referrals to see if we provided any comments or if we received a referral. So I can report back to that. Um, I know that that Leah, the case manager, has been in touch with the City of Thornton and has tried to liaise um about this issue. So I'll hand it over to her to see um what she, what communications she's received from Thornton.
Yeah, so we have talked about this a little bit. It hasn't, I don't think it's been resolved, but it, they are aware of it, and they're working on it, and they're working with the applicant on it. Um, but they, yeah, they, we've had some back and Um, but they, yeah, they, we've had some back and forth about how to resolve this issue.
Okay, so tell me about the resolution timeframe. Cause this board has obviously no control over processes within the city of Thornton. They do their own thing. Um, we might wanna tell them what to do. They don't listen to us, you know, they have their own structures. But tell me about the resolution timeframe as it results to this applicant, the property and the city of Thornton. And how will that proceed if we approve today?
Resolution as far as resolving the drainage issue?
Yes.
I don't know. Um, the applicant might have more information about that.
Okay, well, I'd be curious to hear.
Uh, thank you for your question. I think the, I think it's been a very complicated, um, situation with this right of way, just and I think staff can agree and even the county attorney, because from both sides, um, we are only here in Adams County because it borders, uh, in Adams County property line, even though everything we do exists in Thornton. So they have reviewed, obviously, our plans, um, and quite honestly, they have been the toughest engineering department we've seen as far as how stringent and how extensive their, you know, their water retention and their requirements for these structures are, again, existing within Thornton. I, I think the problem lies within, um, it was like, you know, no, no intent meant, but the, our property does not drain across towards her property. Our property is piped, uh, to the north underneath Riverdale Road past her property. Um, her concerns over a hundred-year flood is why I kind of addressed the detention pond situation, which in I, we are improving that to, and of course, you guys, uh, understand that you guys have standards and the city of Thornton has standards that are only getting more stringent as they have better data and more understanding of what needs to take place to protect people against those hundred-year floods. We are actively, um, from where it sits, again, we are, you know, four acres of house and another acre and a bit of detention pond. We own that detention pond, that is Grange Creek, which is a very large subdivision and all we are doing is improving that. So any hundred-year flood risk, um, that she's worried about, uh, I believe we are actively helping that cause, not hurting it, cause if we do not develop, that pond will sit as it has been since, I believe, the eighties without really being touched. Um, and I think the problem really arises, none of our pipes, and we are a pipe subdivision, everything is going underwater unless we, like you said, unless we have that hundred-year flood where we have spillways and that type of stuff. All the water that's coming from Grange Creek and then any future development from ours is piped and is not going towards her property. It is getting past her and downstream. Her issue, um, because it borders our property, our culvers within the road that Thornton has not maintained. Um, and they are actively, and we're working with the planners to figure out why she, I mean, we're trying to help her because we know her concerns um, can directly affect us, but they are not the result of anything we're doing here. So I can't guarantee a resolution with Thornton besides our helping him because that is Thornton water, that's not water from our property, that's not water from our detention pond there. It is strictly surface water from Riverdale Road or in other areas, um, and culvers that are piped to there, because right where that right-of-way squeezes down, um, on the corner of our property, that culvert goes underground and that's the one I believe she's having problems with where it backs up. And then again, this is hearsay from me, we've looked into it. If that backs up, yes, it would essentially overflow, she can flow at her and get into the other pipe that gets overwhelmed. It is a public problem that she's having with Thornton. Again, I think, um, to disagree with her question, her comments, that we are going to, we are not going to be able to help. The only thing that's drawing attention to her property, as Thornton has ignored her for so long, is us developing this project. So by us doing this, it has drawn attention and probably brought Thornton to the forefront to hopefully resolve her issues from, from River, from Riverdale Road, not from our property and not for the vacation of this right-of-way. This right-of-way does stop short. It kind of maintains itself, uh, on the Hundred and Tenth and on Holly Side across the street from her. But I do think we will serve to help protect her in the future and hopefully get Thornton, um, to pay attention to her problem.
Thank you. Um, can you talk, I really appreciate the due diligence that you've explained. Um, can you talk about your timeline with Thornton and what's, um, coming up with your land use?
Yeah, so we, uh, we, like I said, we've owned this property for five years. We annexed it, um, multiple years ago. Thornton got into their um, issues bringing more water into the city, um, which stalled us out for multiple years. We have since, now that they have procured water, we've since rebooted for about, I think, eleven months now. Um, going through the engineering process, the plat process. Um, we are at third round of comments where we are pretty close to, um, what I believe, you know, kind of dialed in for approval, um, with this, with the vacation of this right-of-way. Um, and we would probably be heading towards if we get approval, which of course, we're at the mercy of Thornton. If we get approval, we would be aiming to actually improving this property within the year.
Thank you. Um, so you haven't had a planning commission hearing on it or, um, a city council hearing on it yet?
Yes, we have. We've actually passed all those. We are just at final engineering plat approval, um, internally through staff of the city.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners for discussion?
My question is, I'm sorry. No, it's more for staff.
Have a seat then, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so my question for staff is, do we know, I'm trying to get the time, trying to understand the, uh, this, these pipes that are going, that were installed, that are impacting Ms. Ewing's property. Do we know, were those installed by the city of Thornton?
So it appears that it was installed by the city of Thornton. It's not listed under county assets on our GIS map. Um, if it goes under Riverdale Road, they would have need to, to work with our public works department to do, uh, a road boring, I'm assuming, instead of a cut. Um, something else, uh, that our engineer mentioned is that, um, we would review um, any outfall, uh, into unincorporated areas. So, um, I'm imagining that we had some, uh, review of that.
Okay, so my, 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 the reason I'm asking the question is my concern is that because this is on the border between Thornton and unincorporated Adams, that no one's going to claim the infrastructure that is clearly impacting her property. So my question is, how do we find that out? Because if, if this new development, proposed development is going to be piping north and did you say east, or are you going east or west when you go north? Okay, thank you. So if the, if, if their piping is taking water away to the north and east, away from her property, who owns the infrastructure that apparently is failing right now?
It is city of Thornton. They have claimed it. They have, in conversations, acknowledged that that is their infrastructure.
Okay, and have we reached out to them to explain how it's impacting unincorporated Adams? That it is a, that their infrastructure is in fact fa- failing or seems to be failing and what, and asked what they can do to rectify it?
Yes, there have been conversations about that. It, it's ongoing.
Okay.
But yeah, they, they understand that there's an issue here.
Okay, um, and is, do, do you, um, agree with the applicant's statement that the, the paired homes that are proposed on this property are not going to, that, that drainage is designed, of course, that's inside the city of Thornton. So have we, have we seen the proposed plan since it's not ours to approve?
Good morning, Board. Uh, Kaiogaite, civil engineer with the community economic, economic development. So we have not, uh, to the best of my knowledge, reviewed all of the engineering plans for the proposed development. Um, we would be a referral agency and we would, uh, have those, you know, typically in this sort of review, we would be given those plans for us to take a look at. Uh, where we would, like, the county, uh, would have concern in this, in that process would be if they are, uh, outfalling to Adams, to Adams County right-of-way. In the event that they are outfalling to the right-of-way, then, uh, yes, it would be something that our engineering staff would address, like, look at, review and then determine if, you know, we have any issues with that.
And is that something then that the city would proactively give to us or do we have to request that?
Um, typically, they give it out to us, uh, with like their review.
And so, and we, have we received anything to date about that regarding this property?
Um, to my knowledge, right now, I don't know, but, um, we can ta- take a look and go through our referrals to see if we have.
Okay, because I, that, that would be my concern is that if this, what the outfall could be from this Thor-, city of Thornton development into unincorporated Adams and also continuing, uh, what is our, uh, do we have a plan, uh, or an intention right now to continue those conversations regarding their failing infrastructure regarding the, that are impacting or that, that are, appear to be impacting Ms. Ewing's property? I guess those are two questions.
My understanding is we do have a referral from them and that, that conversation is still open.
Regarding her property?
Yeah, regarding the infrastructure in general.
Infrastructure in general, okay. And are, so, and then I, I'm, I'm, wanna make sure, are we anticipating that we'll be getting a copy of these plans to, or, or if, or if the intention of this development is that there will be no outfall into unincorporated Adams, then they would not give us that. Is that correct? If they're, if they're planning to pipe it or that it's going to not drain onto our property, you know, or a property in unincorporated, they don't have to share that information?
Typically, if there's gonna be any sort of work, like adjacent to county property or county right-of-way, we would still be a referral agent. Like, we would still, if it's happening and we are next door to it, that is something that, uh, it would at least, you know, come to us and we would take a look at it. Um, the, like, where the county would have like a more extensive, like, drainage review alongside that would be if they are planning to outfall into the right-of-way.
And we don't know that at this time, is that correct?
Yes, to the best of my knowledge, right now, no. I don't, I don't know.
Does this, uh, request for vacation in any way impact that? We would still be potentially, if we did approve the vacation today, they would still have to share with us any, any potential impact of outfall into Adams County, is that correct?
Yes, that, that is correct.
Okay, those are all my questions at this time.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. So I have a, a question for the attorney. Um, what I'm seeing here today is two, okay, how do I, how do I frame this? Two issues at hand. One issue at hand is the land use hearing case of the va- vacating the roadway. The second issue is, um, concerns of infrastructure and drainage, potential challenges, conditions of infrastructure for the city of Thornton. So as Commissioner Pinter had stated, that on the surface, it looks like this is fine, right? The vacation is fine. How do we handle the other parts? So before you answer, I'll let you think about it. Um, grew up in the area, very familiar with Riverdale Road. My grandfather has, um, his farm was just south of you along McKay Road. Um, it is well-known, also being a resident of the city of Brighton and serving on the Brighton City Council, that Thornton is not a good neighbor. They're not a good neighbor. So I don't, they've also had some challenges in city manager leadership. They had a changeover. Now they have a permanent, um, city manager. There's been changeover all the time in elected officials. It's just how this works. Um, while I like the person a lot, I don't think this, the previous city manager really gave a damn about people around him. And I think this board historically has stood up for environmental challenges, including water quality and where does the water go and what does that mean and how does it impact our residents? So I'm looking to my board, um, that in the referral, while in the context of this vacation, which I'm likely to support, um, that the referral is impact to Adams County government and it is impact to the residents of Adams County. And I think that that is unwavering of how that works. Same thing with Fifty-Eighth Avenue that I talked about earlier. That the utilities, um, on Fifty-Eighth, the challenges on Fifty-Eighth Avenue. If it impacts our business, it impacts Adams County, then it is the interest of this board and our referrals and our connections that we leverage this. So I'll let the county attorney respond. I don't think, um, we hear a lot of things in public hearing, also in land use. Uh, they're a hotbed for, for different issues and I feel like even in public comment, if this board hears something in public that we are, we have to respond and we have to act upon that. And that's what I'm, I heard that earlier in public comment regarding the neighbors and then here in land use. So I'll defer to the county attorney for response.
Um, yeah, that's a lot. Um, what I would say is, y- you know, to the extent the concern is impact on residents in unincorporated cow, in, in the unincorporated portions of the county, I would, I would suggest more of a a reach out by the, the board or the county manager's office to the, your counterparts in Thornton. With respect to legal rights, I think, you know, you may have, um, a little more difficulty in that unless it, there's a direct impact to your property, right? The question becomes what, what kind of cause of action eventually would you have? Um, and so, you know, we could look at that, but, um, the impact here looks like it is to, um, as far as I can tell, to individual property, right? A person's individual property that's located in the county. So you know, I would suggest that your, your best approach here might be more political than, than legal. Um, to the extent you're looking at some sort of legal action.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much for the response. I think that I appreciate the way you frame that. Um, I do have a question for the applicant, so if you can make your way down, Colin. I think it's important to this board that our surrounding communities in our communities in Adams County that there is a challenge when there's a breakdown in infrastructure. So whether we're talking roadway infrastructure, we're talking broken culverts, piping, um, et cetera, and when it does impact Adams County, I think that is of interest. So I do appreciate that and then we can talk as a board, um, at a future meeting of what that would look like. So my question for the applicant is, is I'm not, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an expert in this area. Where does the drainage go to? So you're talking the detention pond. Is stormwater collected? Does that get treated, collected by Thornton at some point in this whole, in your development? What does that look like?
So, uh, same, I'm, I'm not an engineer. Obviously, I'm involved in these plans. That drain, that detention pond from Grange Creek currently, um, and to back up this, this property was what was left of the farm that eventually sold to Grange Creek. That was their homestead. They sold the rest of their farm off. Um, that's why the easement was, you know, put in place there for them to drain. That is already currently piped, um, and treated to the standards of something that has not been properly maintained, um, and was in place, um, from when Grange Creek was established. I think it was back in the eighties. Um, that is currently piped. The pipe is big enough to accept, so we've, you know, on the scheme of things, we are a very small piece of property, um, compared to the entire Grange Creek that would be adding to this. But now we are improving those structures, those water treatment qualities, all that stuff to, um, to exhaustion, to our detriments and, and to our costs. So that does get piped, um, it, it does cross underneath of the irrigation canal that you're seeing on that photo, and it does stay piped, um, to the northeast until it eventually enters, um, a stream downstream where it gets treated. That's the extent of my knowledge and where that gets treated. Obviously, that has been established far away from our property and, um, before we've been involved. I, I will say, um, just to alleviate a little bit of, I, I, I understand Thornton, um, we've been told multiple times by everybody that Thornton is a bad neighbor here. Um, their process are still, you know, their interest is to improve their community still. Their, you know, their standards of infrastructure are, uh, very high. We do a, a lot of work from basically this up north. They are higher than Greeley, who takes their water seriously. Um, we are improving this. They have, um, from what I saw, I did see photos where, I think it was a couple of years ago, that they responded to this resident by coming out and cleaning up a swale to try to alleviate it. That was, um, very minimal. It did not withhold the years and more storms and all that stuff. So Thornton has taken responsibility. Their planners that we are working with are acknowledging this and trying to find answers. But as you said, every time there's turnover, I mean, when something was addressed three years ago by the public works department, that person is no longer there. There's new people in place. So we are doing what we can to, uh, to help the residents' concern. But it is Thornton public infrastructure. It is to their forefront. They're acknowledging it. They know about it. But they are searching for answers and a course of action.
I really appreciate that. Thank you, Colin. Commissioner Odricio, did you have a question for the applicant?
Yeah, I'm trying to, uh,
So, wh- while I understand that, that this is, and Thornton may be really good at focusing on how to protect their community, the problem is, is you, you have stated today multiple times that their negligence on maintaining some of the utilities on their, in, in their responsibility have resulted in potential det- detrimental impacts to folks in our community. I have concerns that by moving anything forward at this point until we can get more information, that the more we just keep kicking the can down the road, they're going to do as little as possible to mitigate any sort of detrimental impacts to our side of quote-unquote "the border." That makes me a little concerned. I would like to know what the impact would be if we were to continue this for a day, for a little while and try to figure out how we can leverage a, not leverage, but how we can actually create some sort of dialogue and maybe get your help, since your observations, I think, are extremely important in this situation. Because Thornton in the past, I think, has always claimed that this is something that they don't want to deal with or can't deal with and they send it over to the county side or, and then the county sends it back to the city side. And unfortunately, we have some folks on a very important road and constituents in unincorporated Adams County that are impacted by this volley of, of accountability.
Yeah, I mean, I can answer that in two parts. I would say the risky run by, by not approving it is, that detention pond is existing. And if it's not up to current standards and we walk away because we do not get approval, that will sit there for years and years and years, I mean, probably decades. We are, you know, we are a small family-owned local developer. So what, by not giving approval, you're holding our business hostage, for one, as a political football, which, I mean, obviously I would object to. And at the same time, you will hold this property up from actually being improved against the border of your county. We, we were, are going in there improving that detention pond. So if there is that hundred-year event next week, like they alluded to, we have now accounted for what that's going to take and alleviate that as best as possible. By us coming in here, we've also opened up that conversation with Thornton, bringing attention to her. We have actively stepped in on our own goodwill because, again, the pipes show that these are not our pipes, they're not on our property, but we do understand the concerns and, you know, we are home builders at the end of the day. We aim to improve communities and the people around us matter. We do not want to make enemies in the community. So by not approving it and kicking it down the road, it, you know, it essentially makes it not viable for us. It will cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars as a, you know, a Colorado business and no improvements will be made. And quite honestly, it'll probably get left, I mean, it'll be back in your guys' court to try to bring it to the forefront, whereas our submittal and our activity over there is actually drawing attention to making improvements on this road. So tha- that's the best I can answer. Obviously, that is my word, that we are actively trying to help the community. And, and for the record, when we bought this, we knew it was in Adams County unincorporated. Came to Adams County, we would have hoped to develop this within Adams County. But of course, they own the utilities, they own the services, which forced us to be in here. So we are doing the best we can to help any situation. Obviously, we are in business to make money, but it, it will improve the community. And it can only help her as far as any potential outfalls from the west side of the road, on the other side of Riverdale Road. But we will do what we can to leverage this situation to help her on Thornton infrastructure.
I think that's a very good answer to, from the front to the back, so thank you. I, I would like just to ask for your help as you continue, as you've offered, to provide information as you see it and the observations that you have on the ground, so.
Yes, and, and we heard about this probably within three weeks ago and saw these letters. We have ignited email conversations with the planners that we're working with. We did reach out to the resident and she just asked me here and I'll be happy to speak with her after.
Anything that you can share with us on those communications might help us. Thank you very much. I will support this today.
Chair.
Thank you, Colin, yes.
Chair, thank you. Actually, I actually would like to request that we go into a brief executive session to receive legal advice on this matter.
Okay, thank you, Colin, appreciate it. Second, I'll second that. So we just did an audible.
Was there a specific, just general legal advice on?
On, on this particular, on, on land use and regarding the vacation?
The vacation, all right. Let's do executive session pursuant to CRS 2464024B for legal advice regarding the vacation statute's applicability to this circumstance.
Okay, you want to do a roll call?
Commissioner Henson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoricio? Commissioner Baca?
Yes. So at this time, let's go ahead and take a break for executive session. The time is 11:23. We do have another meeting that started 11:15 that's upstairs. We have guests coming in from out of town. So let's adjourn until, I think we can get this wrapped up in about 15 minutes. So doing math in my head, 11:40. Ready? Okay, the time is 11:32, we're a little bit early getting back. Don't mind that at all, so I don't know if you want to start off, Commissioner Henson, on where we're at?
Sure, thank you, Chair, okay. So we have some dovetailing issues here that are actually, that, they appear to be one issue, they're actually separate, as our conversation has led us to clarify, which is that the vacation of Holly Street in this area and the proposed development, which is not in Adams, unincorporated Adams, it is in the city of Thornton, will act, that that development will be building infrastructure that will tap into the city of Thornton water system, which will be bringing some very old infrastructure underneath the old homestead up into the modern, modern-day code requirements for, for infrastructure. Regarding infrastructure built by the city of Thornton that appears to be impacting Ms. Ewing's property, that is a separate issue from the vacation today. And something that, as has been stated, we as a board take very seriously and not only because it's a health safety issue for the resident of unincorporated Adams County, it is a health safety issue regarding any potential adverse impact or damage to Riverdale Road, which is in, is in Adams County along, along the border there now with the city of Thornton, if drainage and, if drainage infrastructure is not up to par and is not being properly maintained. And so that is an ongoing concern and we do want to have some robust conversations with the city of Thornton regarding this issue as we see development happening all along Riverdale Road from the north to the south. A big chunks of it in the city of Thornton, which again, continues to have potential impact on the health and safety of Adams County residents and people traveling along Riverdale Road, which is, again, you know, in our, under our purview. So I will be making a motion to approve the vacation as presented with those comments that we, that we do have concerns, Ms. Ewing, and thank you for coming forward today to help us continue our conversation and relationship with the city of Thornton regarding these very important life safety issues of infrastructure and maintenance and being clear about what belongs to whom and who has responsibility for what, which are not simple conversations when you get into land use and infrastructure that is then decades old. So we are, that conversation is to be continued, but I make a motion to approve the vacation as presented.
Second, with similar comments that I appreciate, robust conversation moving forward on making sure that possibly for the first time that the flood waters and drainage waters are managed responsibly and cooperatively with the different jurisdictional partners.
Same here, I'd like to thank the applicant and also Ms. Ewing and thank you for your comments this morning. This has gone on for a really long time. I understand that the roadway is historic and so we will do what we can on our side to address the city of Thornton. Commissioners, can please vote? And the motion this morning passes four to zero with one absent. And so with no additional items on our agenda this morning, we are adjourned at 11:36 a.m.